Good evening. I will call the July 22, 2021 School Board Meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM. We are in Conference Room C of the Fisher Administration Building at 121 West North Avenue. Ms. Newen, please call the room.
Ms. Fraley?
Here.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Newfeld?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Absent.
Mr. Allen?
Absent.
Mr. Domann?
Here. Thank you. We will start with public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider their input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond to the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of Agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. We'll start in the room. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? If so, please come forward to the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deb Fogg Pelig, 7435 West Wall Street. Today is July 26th. On July 26, 1990, the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law. This is the largest piece of civil rights legislation impacting millions of Americans across the United States. It has been 31 years since the ADA became law, and we as a nation and we as a community right here in Wauwatosa still have work to do to eliminate barriers for those with disabilities and accessing opportunity and full participation in the community. Some of these barriers take the form of policy, practice, attitude, stereotype, bias. We must all make a conscious decision to work together to take action to eliminate those barriers. I don't know if this is a coincidence with the school district announcing today the new apartment that will be used by our students with disabilities, but I'm going to go with that. Actually, this was intentional to announce it today on the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. I have not seen anything in the communication from today, nor the communication that was sent to parents of students with disabilities prior to date about this new apartment, but I am wondering if information on the ADA accessibility features of the apartment can be shared with the community. And I also would like to consider too that if we don't have expertise within our own staff, that there are others in our community that could help with maybe touring and looking at that. In spring of the school year, it was announced that a new program called Bridges would begin this fall, this fall in the school year, and that it would be also with the existing Next Edps program. I ask, and I really do ask, if the Board can include on an agenda item a presentation on these programs. I believe this would also help meet your own Board Policy 2220 on adoption of courses of study, to be able to hear about that. If for some reason the policy does not match up, I would hope that just as a matter of inclusionary practices for the Board and the community to hear about equally about programs for students with disabilities as you do when you agenda items for programs for the general population. So I'm asking for if we can get more information on the ADA accessibility features of the new apartment, and also if we could agenda an item to learn about what's happening in this apartment. And I truly believe there may be the possibility for the community to even look at employment opportunities and reaching out to more people in our community because there's no group, Title I of the Americans with Disabilities Act is regarding employment. There's no group that has a higher unemployment rate in our country than those with disabilities. So I urge you to please give equal attention to programs that may just apply to students with disabilities as you do to the general population. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Julie Alexander. I live at 7224 West State Street, Unit 1A in Wauwatosa. I'm a person with a disability. I also am the co-chair of the Wauwatosa Committee for Citizens with Disabilities, and I know that we've been working hard on trying to advocate for an accessible apartment for students with disabilities over the past couple of years. So I'm really happy that one has been looked at, and I am hopeful or thankful that you may have looked at that in terms of accessibility issues in relation to the ADA, as well as maybe planning to do so because it would be good for people with disabilities wearing wheelchairs or have other disability issues to have access to that particular apartment. Also, I'm in support of learning more information about the new transition programs and hope that that can be shared widely with the public because you never know what kind of public participation you might find that could really help the school district. Thank you very much, and have a nice day.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Worley, W O E H R L E, 10121 West Highwood Avenue, Wauwatosa. I'm here on behalf tonight of TOSA Together, an organization of community members committed to making Wauwatosa an increasingly welcome city. I'm also a parent of children at Wauwatosa West, Whitman, and Madison Elementary Schools. First, a thank you to all the dedication as a Board and leadership that you gave this last year navigating COVID and engaging the community in a search for our new school superintendent, Dr. Means. Earlier today, I sent you a copy of a recent statement by TOSA Together that reflects on the urgent necessity to address the dangerous narrative and actions emerging from the anti-CRT movement. I am here on behalf of the TOSA Together leadership team tonight to ask that on a future agenda, you develop and pass a resolution that affirms our district equity plan. We believe at this time it is important for our School Board to support those in the district leading and participating in the five elements of the Equity Plan. Reaffirming our district's equity goals will help our leaders forge ahead, even as nationally and locally we are experiencing organized pushback, including pressure for school boards to marginalize the teaching of factual history related to the institutionalization of racism. TOSA Together asks that you develop and pass such a statement so that our dedicated school leaders can effectively continue their implementation of our Equity Plan and continue to build recognition of our district as one that welcomes everyone without bias. Thank you.
Any other public comment from in the room on non-agenda items? Jamie, is there any online?
No, there are no hands raised virtually.
Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda?
I just have a quick question from Ms. Cruz Baron. When will the Board be getting a final update on retention, staff retention? I know we looked at it in June. It's hard as a Board member to keep track, consent agenda after consent agenda, for us to know what the final numbers were. Were they in keeping with last year or changing?
Dr. Means is also creating a dashboard to share with you as a Board.
Love a dashboard.
Yeah, so we'll be sharing that because we are getting a few trickled in now, so we'll give you a final number.
That would be great. Thanks.
So may I ask with respect to that dashboard that we've seen in the past, that it's very informative that we see the number of years of tenure with the district that departing staff have, because in the past it did show patterns about, for example, whatever, I make this up, half the departures were one-year teachers. And that speaks to, I don't know if that would be the case presently, but that's something that I'd be interested in seeing. It helped in the past. I don't know whether it will help in the future, but just to say, let's keep an eye on that just in case it can help us spotlight where our strengths or weaknesses might be.
So include tenure.
Yeah, well, yeah, number of years with the district. You know.
If I could just follow up, I would say not just tenure, and I don't need to see specific things. I would just want to know if there are trends, anything statistically significant that is different from years past or maybe what we were expecting? Basically, what's the story with the data? Because I don't anticipate it's going to be that vastly different, but I'm just curious.
Any other board comment?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to draw attention to the standards and benchmarks on the consent agenda. I think, you know, I've been getting some questions on our standards and benchmarks and curriculum lately, and I wanted just to point that out to the community, that our website has a wealth of information. And if something isn't there that you're looking for, please let us know, and we can make sure that you get a response.
Thank you. Any other board comment? Any community comment on the consent agenda items?
No hands raised virtual.
Just real quick, because of what Ms. Newfeld said, I did look at it, and I noticed that the link, I believe it was social studies, comes up in an Asian language, so it's not a link that worked. So thank you for saying something, because I did look through that, and I noticed that the link was not a link that worked.
For social studies, you said that was?
Yes.
I just looked at it.
I think it said like C. Okay, do you see what I'm talking about?
Thank you. Any other public comment on the consent agenda items?
Mary Jo Randall, 727 North 59th Street. Also regarding the standards, I see that currently DPI is looking at the standards for ELA, math, and social studies. And I don't know how you engage community or anybody in this, but there apparently is an opportunity through August 12 for public input into looking at the standards and determining whether or not they need to be revised. This might go to Ms. Worley's point. There is information on the DPI website, but I don't know that anybody else would have any information about how to go about sharing in that. Perhaps the Board is already aware and is working on that, or has directed the administration to do so. Social studies is kind of a challenging topic right now, and of course, ELA and math are always, always important. So thank you.
Any other public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Newen, please call the room.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Newfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Domann?
Yes.
Superintendent Report, we're going to get an update from Dr. Means on the school opening update.
Thank you, Mr. Domann, and Board members, community members. Before we pivot to the opening day, I just want to thank our HR department. I have asked for that dashboard, and I think the Board may be interested in knowing that as of today, we've hired 42 teachers for the upcoming school year. We still have 11 teachers to hire, technically 10.97 FTEs to hire yet, with the vast majority of that staffing occurring either in our student services area with counseling and OT, school psychologists, an instructional equity coach, but not many at the elementary level. In fact, there's only one vacancy at the elementary level, and that's a fourth-grade position at Jefferson. So kudos to our HR department and our hiring teams of principals and assistant principals and teachers who have given up their summer to make that happen. To date, we have retained 92%. As always, you want to look at it from an asset-based perspective and saying what we lost. We've retained 92% of our staff who started the school year with us last year, and so that's all very good data. Again, we're putting this in a dashboard framework and format for the Board and community to download if you would like to. As it pertains to opening the school year, there are varying factors and pieces of data that we have to continue to consider. Initially, it was our goal and plan to have a recommendation for the Board this evening, but data coming from the public health sector is still moving and still in transition. And to that end, we've decided that it would be more prudent for us to bring a recommendation to you at the August 9 meeting. It's also important to us to have community input, and so to that end, tomorrow, there will be a survey released to all of our parents and caregivers in the district to allow them to weigh in on what they believe we should do moving into the next school year. The questions will vary from the very simplistic question of, do you believe that we should have masks, to what type of mitigation strategies do you believe that we need to have in place? It's also really important to us to have teacher input, and so over the next two weeks, I'll be working with teacher leaders to get their input on this as well. Teachers will have an opportunity to weigh in on a survey as well, so their voice will be heard that way. As it pertains to the city of Wauwatosa, and this is information from the public health team in Wauwatosa, they've been great to work with. The week of July 15 through the 21st, we had a total of 29 positive cases of COVID. That's up from the week of July 1 through July 7, where there were 20 cases. So there's somewhat of an uptick. I think it's also important to note from a Wauwatosa perspective that as of today, and according to our Health Department, a total of 62% of the total population of Wauwatosa has been fully vaccinated. That represents 73% of the eligible population. So again, I want to give that number. A total percentage of the total population, 62%, has been fully vaccinated, which means that 73% of the eligible population has been vaccinated. I think everyone in public health, especially in the Milwaukee metropolitan area, are really looking at the next two weeks or so, when you consider the excitement around the dear district and that case study that has now been presented to us. We're going to really take a look at it and see if we see an uptick at all. I've also had a chance to, I'm going to just make a pivot from our general Wauwatosa data to talk about Wauwatosa School District a little bit. I had a chance to go to all of our summer school sites over the last few weeks, and there's a lot of anecdotal statements around how many kids are wearing masks and not wearing masks. And I think it's difficult to say how many are wearing masks at this point in time. I don't want to venture or make a guess at this point, but I think families and young people are making decisions that are the best decision for their families. But what I can share with you as of today, we've had a total of four positive cases of students in our summer school programming who have had a positive case of COVID. Of those four students, we've also quarantined 35 students and one staff member as being secondary transmissions, but at this time, those individuals who have been quarantined have not tested positive, but they have been quarantined. So from a summer school perspective, which I think is really interesting, there was an option for students, and of that optional environment, we've had a total of four positive cases. We're in the final week of summer school this week, and so we'll continue to take a look at how many students may test positive. We're going to be optimistic and hope none, none of our students test positive. And so that's a data point for our summer school in Wauwatosa. Couple other points, and then I'll pause and see if there are any questions from the Board. In regards to being fully vaccinated for our young people, our students who are eligible for the vaccine right now, this is the final week in which you can start your cycle of the two shots in order to truly be fully vaccinated by the first day of school. If you start your cycle any time past this week, you run the risk of not being fully vaccinated by the first day of school. So we'll continue to work with Sarah and our communications team to really publicize the opportunity for our students to go into the first day of school fully vaccinated. Again, that's for our students who aren't eligible for the vaccine. Eric and I had a chance to work with our Medical Advisory Council, and they're a great group. They have provided a lot of good information. I think the most vital piece of information is that we're still waiting on a date, a release date, for a vaccination for our younger students. And I think that availability of vaccine for our younger students will impact the recommendation that we bring to you on August 9, along with some of the other data points, again, of surveys and watching the transmission and positive cases in the community. But also, we realize that we serve students from the entire metropolitan area, so we're looking at transmissions and positive cases in area neighboring communities as well. So in short, the report that I would like to give to you is that we are pleasantly surprised and pleased with the low number of positive transmissions. We wish it was zero, but to have four with the type of environment that we've had this summer, I think it gives you a sense of where things are. We'll continue to watch where the community transmission leads us, and again, we hope to have opinions from other stakeholders in addition to the scientific feedback that we're getting to ground our recommendation to you on August 9. Eric, I want to give you the floor and see if you have anything else to add.
No, I think that was a really great summary. I think we're in that moment. My takeaway is we're in a moment where there's, I think, local data is going to matter, both the schools in the area. It was one of the takeaways I had, and there's certainly a lot of changes happening right now with, I think, Journal Sentinel said 20 straight days of increased case rates in Wisconsin right now. So I think there's a hope that we'll see that trend debate, but two weeks from now, we'll know more.
Any other board comment on the Superintendent Report? Any community comment on the Superintendent?
Oh, thank you. I just have one clarification, Dr. Means. The recommendation will include mitigation measures, including masks and recommendations. Will it also include mode of instruction, or are we in-person mode of instruction?
It will also include mode of instruction. It's our goal right now to be in-person, but also to make other modes of instruction available to students if they are, they're still in a place where in-person is not their preferred choice.
Okay. And when do you expect the recommendation, the first meeting in August?
August 9.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. I mean, I guess I can just share from my perspective in my seat, I am very pro or in favor of mitigation strategies for this virus, and I continue to wear a mask when I'm in public places and if someone asks me to, or if I feel like there's someone in the room who would prefer if I did. So I, you know, I'm just very, I understand, and I know I've received a lot of comment about this topic, and I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any other Board comment on the Superintendent Report? Any public comment? Jamie, is there any hands raised? We'll start there this time.
No, there are no hands raised.
Come forward and take your name and address.
Lynn Worley, 10121 West Highwood Avenue. I was actually planning on speaking to this, but perhaps my family provides an interesting case study related to the summer. We were over the moon with the idea of our children being able to be TOSA-connected and go in-person in summer school, and to be able to perhaps get themselves to a place where they were ready for the fall. And we were shocked when the letter came out saying that masks would be optional. We withdrew our children for the summer because it's too much risk for our family and our health situation, and because my youngest, who is not eligible for vaccination due to her age, has an intellectual disability, and it would be very difficult to convince her to keep masks on when other children are not. And I felt the teacher just shouldn't have to be monitoring that during the summer. So we withdrew. We invested some personal finances in getting a babysitter, but there's no doubt that my children are not, at this point, in the same place that they would have been had they been able to utilize the services of the summer school. So I just want to share that. I know this is a difficult, very difficult journey for the school district, and that there were a lot of people excited about the decision to be optional, but it really did have some unfortunate impact in our household. Thank you for that opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the Superintendent Report from in the room? Seeing none, we'll move to final public comment on non-agenda items. Anyone who would like to speak on non-agenda items?
Mary Jo Randall, 727 North 59th Street. I wanted to acknowledge and thank Dr. Means for scheduling a listening session in the Gordon Center, I believe it's called, on Humboldt Boulevard. Every single diversity and engagement and equity committee that I've served on throughout the years has tried to address the issue of access for our parents of students who do not live in Wauwatosa. And we've tried so many different ways. We've had evenings where we invited them in, tried to provide transportation and so on, but real equity happens when you reach out. And thank you, Dr. Means, for starting that mission.
Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items?
I wanted to follow up on an email I sent about the $3 billion that the federal government has released July 1 for students with disabilities. And so I think it was last week I was on a phone call with DPI when I asked this question.
DPI was on the call, and they said it's going to be a similar, it's an application process for school districts, and it's going to be similar to how IDA funds are funneled down to the school districts. So I'm hoping, I'm not sure whose area this is, but that somebody could maybe be following up on it. And the other portion of the call with DPI was about the SRT3 funds, and so I believe the school board said that, or somebody had said, we're going to have some listening sessions, because DPI did say that's mandatory, that districts have listening sessions on how that funding will be used, and that 20% of the funding needs to be used on targeted groups, which would include children with disabilities. So hopefully sometime as we all here, that we get some, I know it's not your list, there are 25 listening sessions, but that we have some separate listening sessions in the community on those SRT funds plus the $3 billion nationwide for the students with disabilities that was released July 1st, that the White House announced. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none in the room. Jamie, are there any hands raised online?
No, there are no hands raised.
Do you maintain any motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Freyli?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Banger?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mr. Domann?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.